I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Who's it?
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here. Sorry.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number One, 2020, closing and vacating a portion of Blucher Avenue between Beach Street and Birch Street.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. There are no speakers that have signed in on the sheet. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss this item? Seeing that there are no speakers, oh, we have one. Mrs. Schumacher?
Yes, Marie Schumacher. I am highly in favor since the school is there, and I think you should go ahead with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Since there's no one else, this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away recently in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Who's it?
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mrs. Reed, would you please dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Third order, 3A minutes of the Ethics Board regular meetings held November 7 and December 12, 2019. 3B correspondence dated December 29, 2019, received from Department of Licensing, Inspections and Permits regarding delinquent rental registration mailing. 3C memorandum dated January 13, 2020, from Mayor Page G. Cognetti in reference to Act 511 Appeal. 3D independent auditor's report for year ending December 31, 2018, prepared by Kohansky and Company, P.C. 3E minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting held December 18, 2019. 3F minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board meeting held December 18, 2019. 3G minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held December 18, 2019. 3H minutes of the Composite Pension Board meeting held December 18, 2019. 3I agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board meeting held January 15, 2020. 3J Controllers' Report for the month ending December 31, 2019. 3K Tax Assessors Results Report for hearing date held January 15, 2020. And 3L Agenda for the City Planning Commission meeting to be held January 22, 2020.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
This Saturday, January 25, from 9 to 3 p.m., at Montage Mountain is the Polar Plunge Splashing with Compassion. All proceeds from this event go directly into the hands of young individuals battling cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrew. Anyone else? I have three announcements. First, I would like to congratulate Lieutenant Marty Crofton, one of Scranton's finest in our police department, who retired last week. Lieutenant Crofton has served the city since 1980, the last 17 years of those as patrol lieutenant. He is one of the most respected and trusted officers, and we wish him a long, healthy, and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Lieutenant Crofton. We thank you for your dedicated service to your fellow officers and to the residents of this city. Second announcement, Kohansky and Company will conduct an audit exit conference regarding the 2018 Independent Auditor's Report on Tuesday, February 4, at 5:45 p.m. in council chambers, and that will be televised on ECTV. The 2018 audit report has been posted to the city's website on the Department of Business Administrators page, and it is also listed as Item 3D on tonight's agenda. The 2020 budget is also posted on the city's website as well. Mrs. Reed, fourth order?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
The first speaker tonight is Anna Tunney.
Hi, I'm Anna Tunney from the Lackawanna County Community Relations Department. We have a few events and dates that we'd like to share. Lackawanna County Parks and Recreation has its Winter Golf Clinic beginning on February 17, ending on March 12. There are four weekly sessions for adults, Monday through Thursday, or Monday and Wednesday. For children ages 8 through 16, sessions are on four consecutive Fridays. Lackawanna County Parks and Recreation is also hosting an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, the 4th of April at McDade Park. Registration is on the 4th of April at 9:45 a.m., and the hunt begins at 10 a.m. Lackawanna County Office of Environmental Sustainability has put together a pick-up-and-drop-off Christmas tree schedule. This is up on the county Facebook page. Penn State Extension is hosting the Northeast Vegetable Meeting on January 23, located at the Newton Ransom Fire Company in Clark Summit. The U.S. Census is looking for applicants for 2020. If you're interested, you can apply at 2020census.gov/jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night. Next speaker is Joan Hodoanitz.
Joan Hodoanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I'm giving you some of my notes on a quick and dirty look at the 2018 audit. The issues I raised aren't really the responsibility of Kohansky and Company. This is the administration's responsibility. And there are some math errors, you know, $10 million here, $900 million there, you know, an operating deficit of $21 or $22 million, you know, minor things. But it's quite evident, nobody from the administration sat down and proof-read the document, and that does not take an accountant. That takes somebody that proof-reads and finds obvious outrageous errors. By the way, the city does not own the Scranton Public Library, nor does the city have a joint zoo authority with Lackawanna County. Couple of things that need to be scrubbed, it's been year after year after year of cut and paste. So, I would like you to get a public caucus with Rainey and Rainey, because I think those people got a lot of splaining to do if they were supposed to help the BA's office prepare for the audit. It's embarrassingly bad. What is the status of the MS4 permit? Is it soup yet?
I'm still waiting for a reply from the administration.
Okay. With regard to the editorial on Mayor Cognetti yesterday and yesterday's Times Tribune, I know that applied to media relations, but if you get a chance as council president, would you ask her to put out a policy, preferably in writing, of how citizens could get an appointment to see her or any of her department heads? I have been trying to get an appointment to see Mayor Courtright since March 16, 2016, and I'm still waiting, also with Mr. Bolzoni, and I'm still waiting. So, I would like to know, does she have an open-door policy for the public? How would she like the public to approach her? It's kind of important to me, because I got shut out during the last administration. Well, not Mayor Evans, I'm talking about Mayor Courtright. As I asked last week, have you, as council president, received the adjustments from the BA's office on the maximum campaign contribution limits as required in the Ethics Code?
We have not received those yet.
You need to bug 'em. That was your baby. You were the prime pusher of that, you know, resurrection of the Ethics Code.
Well, I-
Eat 'em over the head.
Right.
Show no mercy.
Okay.
Okay? It's supposed to be done on January 1. Clock is ticking.
Right.
I understand there are two upcoming bid openings for RFPs. This Thursday at 10 a.m. in council chambers will be the RFP for the Ethics Board Solicitor. I'd be curious to see how many bids they got for that. And January 27, next Monday, will be the city's Special Labor Council. Be interesting to see what kind of bids they got on that one. And finally, we got some good news. We may settle the sewer authority lawsuits. Let's everybody cross their fingers and their toes, and if necessary, their intestines, because we really do need some good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Next speaker is Fay Ferrannis.
Fay Ferrannis, Scranton. Welcome, Mr. McCandrew and Dr. Rothschild. It's very nice to see you here.
Thank you.
Today, I dropped off pamphlets for all of council member. Bill Gahn, I gave you part of it earlier, so just kowd down here, we'll show you the other parts. I want to discuss the situation in the Bellevue section in Scranton. Bellevue is between South Scranton and Westside. It is a separate community. It is not part of Westside. 23 years ago, I started coming to council to complain about the tractor-trailers on Railroad Avenue where I live, and I finally got an ordinance passed, File of Council Number 29, September 15, 1995, and that banned all trucks. And the entrances to Bellevue are West Elm Street and Meridian Avenue, the South Side Shopping Center at South Elm Street, 7th Street in Lackawanna, and North Washington and Broadway by the South Side Ball Field. All trucks over 10-ton are banned from going there because it's a cave area. My garage caved in. The house on the street from me on Railroad Avenue, the kitchen caved in. The house behind me is gone on 5th Avenue. It's gone. It caved in. So anytime a tractor-trailer comes down my street, my house shakes. In 25 years, I've met with Chief Cleef, Chief Graziano, many times. In 25 years since this order was, the law was passed in 1995, only two trucks were stopped. Now we have a dire situation. I wrote Mayor Cognetti a letter with all the information, with seven documents regarding this, all the information about the lawsuit, the Bogart Engineering Study that said the results were, any heavy vehicles on these streets in Bellevue will cause subsidences. So that's what they based this law on, that report from the engineering Bogart. So, I'm a little fed up, because only two trucks have been stopped in 25 years. Clark Summit stops trucks all the time, and some of the fines are up to $1,000. They don't need to be warned, they need to be stopped. But now we have a dire situation, because on South Elm Street, Louis De Naples owns a business. Right as you come up South Elm Street past where PNC Bank was, you go over the bridge, past Danny's Auto, you make a left, and there's a big quarry back there. And they go right, actually, it goes all the way to the behind Walmart on Taylor Hill. That's how long this is. They have trains on one side and a river on the other. They unload the salt from the trains, and they have dump trucks, they have big things filling dump trucks up, 40,000 pounds, going, they used to go, they go in empty over the bridge on Elm Street, and they come out full, but they can't go back down the bridge now because they ruined the bridge. It's not safe for these trucks to go down now because of the weight of these trucks caused the bridge to be not safe. So now they're going down 3rd Avenue, which is prohibited by law, and these houses are in a cave area. So, nobody is above the law, and I know Mr. De Naples doesn't have any other way out, but that's not our problem. That's his problem. This train goes all the way to Kaiser Avenue, all the way to Taylor. Let him find another route. That, again, is not our problem. If our houses cave in because you're allowing him, that you put his trucks on our street, I think the city would be very responsible. Every, like I said, it's very dangerous. If my house caved in, I'm dead. I mean, you could, you don't get out of it. I have a brick house. How do you escape a house that's caving in? You don't, you die. So you ask yourself, what's more important? Not only that, they're going down 3rd Avenue now, and what are they doing? They're turning right on the Broadway. Guess what? That's 10-ton. There's no signs to say that, that they could go there. Plus, now they're going over that bridge in front of the University of Scranton Ball Field. Now they're going to ruin that bridge. Maybe taking two years, but they're going to ruin another bridge, so the taxpayers have to pay to get two bridges fixed. That's millions of dollars because of Mr. De Naples' 40,000-pound trucks. And on South Elm Street by the PNC Bank, there was a sign that said 10 tons. Somebody changed that sign and put up a sign that said 18 ton, for him to be able to put his trucks to go over that bridge when they were able to go over it. I want to know, who authorized that sign to go from 10-ton to 18, and did it come in front of city council to get approved? So, this is outrageous. They could go in there empty, but they can't go out, they can't go back over the bridge full. That's why they're going on our streets, and it's going to come in front of council to do something about this. And I'm begging you, on city council, look at the package that I gave you, take them home, and look at them very carefully, look at them slowly, and you will see exactly what I'm talking about. And if you have any questions, my telephone number is on there. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferrannis. Have a nice night. Next speaker is Marie Schumacher.
I scanned the backup on the last week's emergency appeal, and I don't, I don't know that we have done that properly. Mayor Cognetti may want to put all of the Scranton Sewer Authority issue in the past because she wasn't here, but I don't think it should be in the past. I think we need the help from her former boss, and more importantly, I think we need to look at that contract. If I read it right, there is absolutely no, no estimation, or no explanation or description of how we want it billed. Now, we remember all the lawyers' bills we got in this Scranton Sewer Authority deal, and how anemic they were. I don't think we need that again, and I don't think this firm would do that. But we have two big items. We have no budget for this, correct? This was not budgeted?
Actually, we are going to request, we spoke about this in the caucus, we're going to request as a requirement before we, final passage of this legislation, that they adhere to a litigation budget, so that we have an idea of how much this is going to cost, and so that we can attempt to control the costs.
Okay, and, yeah, I think, I think we need to know what was done, who did it, and what it is, and how often they're going to be billed, are they going to bill monthly? As a matter of fact, I would suggest you do two, two special counts. One for the Stevens and Lee bills cumulatively, and then we are, it says, unless special agreements are made, fees and expenses of others, such as experts, investigators, witnesses, consultants, and court reporters, and other large disbursements in excess of $300, will not be advanced by our firm and will be the responsibility of and paid directly by the client. So we're going to be billed for those, and I think we should also know how that has accumulated over time. So, I would definitely like to see what you're going to recommend. Do you have a dollar figure in mind for the?
Well, that, the dollar figure would come from Stevens and Lee. That's what we're going to be requesting. So we're going to ask them, basically, to live within a budget.
Just for this year?
I don't know. Solicitor Hayes, would it be for a year, or would it be for the duration of the appeal? I don't know how that works.
My recommendation would be for the duration of the appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I know we, I believe at least, that we let a contract for somebody to take a look at the Lips Department and see how we were doing. When is that report due in to us?
Well, the, the issue there is, and I'm not exactly sure why yet, they have not started the review yet. They have, as far as I know, they have not been in contact with the Licensing and Inspections Department.
Hmm, but what, we have a contract with them, though, do we not?
Correct. So I don't know what the holdup is. I did speak to the Mayor Cognetti's Chief of Staff today, and they are going to be in contact with Berry Isid. I don't know if it was something in terms of the transition, and something got lost in the shuffle, but it is an issue that we're aware of. It has not been started yet.
Okay, that brings up another point, contracts. Are we going to get them on the, in third order so we can download what we want and at least look at them before they're? I thought, I thought we were going to start posting the-
I think the idea there was to find a way to put the contracts on the city's website. I don't know necessarily that they have to go in third order. It's really one and the same, but I agree with you, that, that is an idea-
When is that going to be implemented?
I, I don't know. That would, that would be up to the administration.
And are you going to go back a year for every contract that's not been completed, or are you just going to?
That would, that would have to be discussed with the administration.
Okay, I would suggest anything that's not enclosure should be there.
Okay.
And then, everything I read in Stormwater, it seems to make the assumption there's going to be a, an authority, which I am against. And are you going to vote on whether or not that's going to be, and when are we going to do something? See a schedule for?
Yeah, we, we, I'll, we'll end it with this. We, or I asked, and I think all my colleagues on council agree, that we should have Hubert, Rowland, and Grubik, who is the company that's doing the assessment, in for a public caucus. That is being worked out. I think I asked for a response by next, or by this Friday, but I do think it is important to get an update from them. As for whether we vote on that, if it is a new authority, I'm certain that it would have to have legislative approval.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Have a nice night. Next speaker is Ron Elman. Could you, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Brother Bill.
Could you state your name for the record?
I know we've had some-
Mr. Elman?
I didn't hear you.
Could you, sorry, could you state your name for the record, for the stenographer?
I didn't hear you.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ronnie Elman, taxpayer in Scranton. As I said, I know we've had some differences in the past, but I want to say that I hope you have the most successful city council since the founding of Scranton, and I really mean that.
Thank you.
That was then, and this is now, and all you gentlemen and ladies need to put more attention on the working people, the taxpayers of this city than downtown. And Jessica, I have no argument in the world with you. I've tried to say so. I just didn't know what in the world you, your platform was till you, you know, you spoke down to the, at the meeting. But when you, when you go to a social event, you're like everybody else. You're not a member of the Scranton City Council, you're an individual. I hope that you make me eat my words if I've offended you in any way, like Mary Walsh did, because she sure made me proud that she was sitting in that seat. And now the mayor. It seems to me that she's just off of the wrong foot. She doesn't have the merits to be in this position, so the only way she could be successful is to have a good administration, and so far, that's, that's been, they're off of the wrong foot. And when our extreme leftist Democratic paper that supported her comes out like yesterday's editorial, you know there's something wrong. We bought our house over 25 years ago, and my neighborhood was something to be proud of, and now it is terrible. It is, it's just going downhill. The Licensing Bureau, the city, nobody seems to care. I got, we have undesirables that have just poured into single houses. They got cars parked on the sidewalks because there's nowhere to park, and then yards turned into buttholes. 122 Troop Street that I've complained about for six months. There's a broken-down school bus, which is against the state code and the city code. It's huge. It's not like a regular school bus. It's a big thing. The backyard is full of broken-down junk cars the guy collects. Besides that, he lives here, he works here, and he got New Jersey license plates on his car, because it's so junky it won't pass inspection. He jokes about it. This is what ruins neighborhoods, it ruins the values, and then, on the other hand, we got all these reasons that taxes are skyrocketing. You know, last Friday's paper was 88 foreclosures in the city and county. That doesn't seem to register with anybody. Look what people are looking up to now. We got Jerry wants 11% heightened taxes, and he supports a reassessment. We got the rain tax, the mayor supports that. We've lost that lawsuit, and that lawsuit, that is the result of a fact. It's not, it's not an assumption or something. It's a fact, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Brother Bill?
Yes.
I got a peace offering for the mayor, and I wish you'd give it to her, since taxpayers aren't allowed down at her office anymore.
You, you can leave that with-
Thank you.
Ms. Carrera. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Counsel. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer.
Good evening.
Well, here I go on my new favorite subject, the Lips Department and the rental registration. Last week, I spoke about myself, that I'm exempt from the rental registration, and they still insist that I have to register every year, and I said, "The ordinance says you don't have to register." Did anyone look into that?
I have a phone conversation tomorrow with Mr. Oleski, and I do plan on bringing that up.
Yeah, but he told me that you still have to register, and it says, right in black and white, you do not have to register.
I, I know we talked about this a number of times. You're exempt from the fee.
I'm exempt from the fee, and I shouldn't have to fill out the form either.
But the city still has to know on record that your property is owner-occupied.
What does "don't have to register" mean?
You're exempt from the fee.
It's not what it says. It says you do not have to register. Look it up. You have the computer.
And that's something we could look at, if, if, if it's a change in the-
Well, look at it. You have a computer right in front of you.
If it's a change in the language, we could do that.
I don't want to waste my time. Look it up. If you want to talk when I'm done, talk, but it's in black and white, you have a computer right there. I don't know what you have it for. You could look it up. And I did speak with the director, and I, about all the- for. You could look it up. And I did speak with the director, and I, about all the money they spent on those mailings that went to people that don't even have rental properties. He said, "Oh, we got most of that back already." I just heard tonight, "No, we didn't. We got about a third of it back, I'm told." And even if we did get it back, if we didn't spend all that postage, which we didn't have to, because I got another one two days later, regular mail. So if they just sent one to one regular mail, we would've saved a heck of a lot of money. The 4,000 cer- certified mail cost $27,200, if memory serves me correct. And plus, the regular mail one was an extra $2,000. That's over $29,000 they spent. If we didn't spend all that money, just sent to one regular mail, we would've saved a lot of money, plus whatever we got back. And I did speak to the mayor a little bit last week after she spoke out here. And I said, "There is a lot of incompetence in Lips Department," and she didn't disagree with me. I said, "I think we need changes there," and she did agree with me there. And another example here, somebody told me yesterday, they used to own a property in Southside. It was down. There was an empty lot. They sold the lot to Jordan Towing. This woman is still getting a rental registration form. It just shows how incompetent that department is. People are getting them that shouldn't get them. It's just ridiculous. That's all I have on that tonight. Next thing, my next question is my other favorite subject, the garbage fee. Is there any news on if that, if the garbage fee is gonna go in with the property taxes?
We haven't received official word from the administration, Mr. Spindler, but it's my belief that that will not ha- I don't think it's practical that it'll happen this year, because we still have to vote on the legislation authorizing the garbage fee. And even if it was on our agenda tonight, that takes three weeks. The bills go out in February. Not practical. I highly doubt that it will happen.
Like I said in the past, not only should it be done this year, it shouldn't be done ever, 'cause it's illegal, like I was told from a CPA. You can't put a fee in with property taxes. You can't put a fee in with taxes. There's nowhere to claim it on a tax form. You don't have to be a CPA to figure that out. But this is coming from a CPA, so I think before that's even thought about again, that it should be looked into. And speaking of incompetence, I thought the temporary mayor, Evans, was incompetent, just by doing that without even knowing what he was doing. Another thing, as I've said in the past, we should be making it easy for people to wanna stay in this city. And the example is the Houdini Museum. People have come here from there, week after week after week complaining. It's a darn shame that they can't get a permit to get that roof fixed. And somebody that does some work for me, a contractor, told me, "If it's a residence, if that was a residence, they wouldn't need a permit. To just patch a roof, you don't need a permit. It's right in the city code. But being that it's commercial property, they have to get a permit." I think the law should be changed. These people said they're considering moving out of the city, and that's wrong. We should be making it easier for people to wanna stay here, not to move out. I want the city to be like it was when I was growing up in this city, when there were 100,000 people. And the Lips Department is making it harder for people to wanna stay here. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. I just wanna wish Marty Croft and best of luck in his retirement. He's a wonderful man. I'm gonna miss seeing him at the Mary Mother of God picnic every year. He, he was the officer working there, man. So, good luck, Marty.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Have a nice night. Next speaker is Norma Jeffries.
Norma Jeffries, city resident. And before I start what I came to speak about tonight, I just wanna thank the MLK Commission and the city of Scranton, and the wonderful job that they did over the weekend for the MLK celebration. The luncheon at the university was outstanding. The speaker was outstanding. The, I didn't do the walk, can't do the walk anymore, but I did attend the service last night, and everything was just excellent. So, I say this all because, just think about it next year, to put it on your calendars. Just try to attend and support it, 'cause it's always so uplifting to, as they have that celebration. I'm not a member of the committee. I'm just a John Q. Public, you know, that just enjoyed it. But tonight I'm coming on now to speak on the parking in our downtown Scranton. Since the first of the year, I've had three occasions to use the parking meter system out there, which has turned out to be very disappointing. My first occasion was here at the inauguration. I was here bright and early, had a great spot and everything to, to watch the celebration, and I hoped to take pictures, which I wasn't able to do, because there was a limit of two hour, two hours on the meter, as I think it was. So I had to put my $4 in, my $4 in quarters, because I didn't wanna use my credit card or my debit card. So I did. I loaded up the machine, and then my time ran out. So I had to leave my good spot and go down and put more money in the meter. I didn't have the quarters, and thank you, Lord, for Fidelity Bank was gracious enough to change my dollars into quarters, so that I could continue to park my car there. So that was my, when I came back up, you know, the place in the hallway was jammed, so I sat there on the step after being here so early. My second time that I had my experience with the parking, I was, I had to come downtown to take care of business, and I wasn't sure how much time it was gonna be, so I put my eight quarters in, and I only needed 15 minutes. So now I'm 45 minutes into debt to the parking system. I pulled out, and I thought, "Hmm, I wonder if I get a credit for this?" 'Cause I put my money into the meter. So I had my receipt sent to my phone, so I thought, "Well, maybe they're going to send me a credit back to my phone." I didn't get anything. The second time, I had to go back with the papers I needed. And I went back, and I put eight quarters in again. This time it only took me a half hour to get, take care of my business, and there was no credit again. So, in the old days, when there was a meter, you know, you'd write around and you'd say, "Oh, there's still time on that meter. I only need a couple of minutes," and you could pull into the meter. But right on your receipt, it tells you that this receipt is only for this spot, which means you cannot go anywhere else in the city and use up 45 more minutes for parking. So then I thought, I says, "Okay." I go to city council a lot, and I said, "Well, how did I miss that? How did I miss that contract?" So I went online, tried to find the contract to see what and who and when was this all done, and I couldn't find anything. So, I just need to have a couple of questions. Number one, when was it signed? Who did it? And what do I, as John Q. Public, have, what recourse do I have, other than get a ticket, which I hear is $35? Well, I don't want that, you know? I think we should have a refund. I mean, if I'm not, they know that my car's not there, and when they come in and they see another car is parked there, they're double dipping. They get my $8, and then if someone pulls in, eight quarters, I mean, and then if they, someone else pulls in, they get eight quarters put in. So this is like double dipping. So they got mine, and they get the next person. So then I thought, "How much money is the city getting back on this? Or is it a 50/50 deal? Do you get 50%? And who is it? A parking meter, ABM, I think it's ABM. They get the rest of the money? I don't know." And then I thought, "Okay, does it come up for review? Is it a lifetime thing, or is it a yearly contract, or what is it?" And then I thought, "Hmm, what do I do? What recourse do I have?" Someone said, and I wouldn't do this, you know, "Go over to the parking lot and park there, over at the, at the boss cup," you know, "And just pretend you're shopping." Well, I'm not gonna do that. So I just thought, you know, those are my concerns about our new parking arrangement, which I don't think it's very competent whoever signed the contracts.
Thank you. Mrs. Jeffries, Mrs. Reed, is NDC coming in next week? Okay, so the, the parking, the nonprofit that oversees the parking meters, and I believe the parking operator is coming in next week to give a quarterly update to council at 5:45, and that will be televised on ECTV, and we will be able to ask questions. To answer your one question, you know, I have a document that I can share with you that kind of explains the whole deal. Won't go through it all right now, 'cause it would take me a little while. But the long and short of it is that we're paying for sins of the past. The Parking Authority was allowed to go into default, I believe, in 2012, so the city at that time basically had, you know, that hanging, that default hanging around its neck. It ruined our credit rating. We're still paying for that issue. So one of the results of that was to lease our parking system to NDC, who is a nonprofit. So, the long and short of it is, I was here, I voted for the contract. I believe Councilman Rogan was here. He voted for the contract. I don't believe anyone, no, no one else was here. The reason I voted for it, we didn't have another choice. It was either that or continue to bleed out, because we had a receiver who was costing us millions of dollars each year. So, within that contract, the rates are set each year. And I can have Mrs. Reed share that with you, so you can take a look at it. And again, I have a document that kind of summarizes the whole thing, so.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to read that.
Sure. And I think we have your contact information, or you can leave it with Ms. Carrera, and I will get you those documents. And then, like I said, next week, the parking operator will be here, so that should be very informative as well.
And who asks the questions? Do you ask them, or do we?
We can ask the questions. If you have any questions, if you don't mind putting them in writing, I can certainly submit those in advance to Mr. Sweet, who usually comes. We can see if we can get those answered for you.
Okay, that'd be great.
And I will double check this, but I believe, the way I understand it, is that you're able to travel, park anywhere downtown for that amount of time. So if you were to put two hours in, you could go anywhere downtown in those two hours, not just that one spot. But I will double check for you.
Yeah, double check it, 'cause it's on my re- on my phone.
Because I actually saw a video or something on Facebook they put about, about the new parking system, that you could move around, 'cause it's based off your license plate.
Oh, that'd be great. Okay. You let me know.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeffries.
I'd like to say something, Mrs. Jeffries. I share your concerns also. The day of inauguration, I ended up paying a ticket, 'cause of the $2 limit that I really wasn't clear and aware of. And I do have a couple of questions, one being, because I haven't found that information yet, is, in the past, if you paid early, or paid within a certain amount of time, it was a reduced fee. So I'm not sure, you know, that's a question I have myself for next week.
Yeah, I even thought of having a, like an EZ Pass card to swipe, and we'll get a reduction if you bought a monthly pass or something. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Next speaker is Lee Morgan.
Good evening, Counsel. Lee Morgan. I'd like to touch on something that Ron Elman brought up about elected, whether they're councilmen or mayors, and they go to an affair, wherever it is. I just think that it's not proper, as far as I'm concerned, to introduce yourself as a representative of the city. If you're, if you're intergovernmental, that's a different thing. But I don't think we should play so fast and so loose as identifying as either a councilman or a mayor of a city, because we don't wanna imply that the residents of this city support any certain position until we ask them what they support. And that's not being critical of any individual. I just think that we shouldn't claim to represent something we don't represent. Now, in regard to Fay Francis, who came up here and spoke, I had a discussion with her last week about the situation she's facing over there. And she said something about the city doing a new study on, on the streets and, and the capabilities of those streets to take the weight of trucks and so forth and so on. You know, in the discussion she had with me, she said that she tried to get a copy of the report, the backup to the report that was written, and she was told it was lost. Well, I just think that Fay needs to figure out, like I've said to 100 million people before, this council doesn't have answers for her. She needs to go to the courthouse and file something. And I think somebody should help her do that, because I don't think anybody should allow any elected branch of government to legislate something that brings harm to them, when that legislative body has already highlighted the harm that's being done in a previous study. And the other question is, why aren't trucks being ticketed there? And I don't know why that area isn't posted in a more proactive manner. And, you know, she brings up ownership. Well, whoever owns that property needs to build an access road to it, whoever that is. Now, in regards to the parking situation, I think Janet Evans did this city a major favor by pushing the Parking Authority into default, because this city has just come to the point where it believes that its residents are nothing more than instruments to tax. And, you know, you have to thank the person that went into court and got the judgment now that the city's trying to fight off. And like I said last week, I thought the city was gonna judge shop the top of the court to try to get a judgment in their favor. And by the attorney they picked, who is a former judge, it just seems to prove my point. But the people really being harmed in this city are the residents. And I haven't heard this council say that they were gonna open the budget and remove the money that this judge said you should not be collecting until after the appeal. And when we look at this Grand Parking Authority that somebody came up here and talked about, as I started to talk about Janet Evans, you know, the city bought 500 parking spaces for close to $5 million, I believe. We don't even know where they are. And what was the benefit to the residents of selling these parking garages? There was none. And the person who the nonprofit may have possession of it, but a for-profit company is running it for them. And this city couldn't run it themselves. You know, we've played politics for a long time, and it's nice to wear pretty little suits and show up, but, you know, you have to have an ability to think and protect the residents of this city, and it just hasn't happened. It's just pathetic. Okay, we have a school district in complete and utter collapse. And, you know, the residents have to take some blame, because they voted these people into office who weren't competent to start off with. But then, you have to look at how far this travels, even though you can't even count on your state representative or your state senator. But I do think this. I think that if push comes to shove, Fay is gonna end up going to court, and somebody's gonna help her file, and then we're gonna start playing little games. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Those are all the names on the sign-in sheet. Would anyone else like to address counsel this evening?
Good evening, members of council. My name is Thomas Coyne.
Good evening.
I've come in, I didn't plan directly to talk to counsel this week, but in listening to what was spoken about, first of all, I wanna take a look at the Houdini Museum. I understand there are contract and issues involved with that and licensing. In the city of Scranton, for governmental purposes, there was an exception always written into contracts that if it fell below, below a specific dollar amount, that it did not have to be bid. I do not see why an exception cannot be put in or amended to that would allow a business, instead of having to get massive contracts for licensing for a small roof repair, if it's under $2,000, to allow a general contractor to do such a work, similar to the process where if it's under a certain bid amount, these steps are not required for a larger amount of contracting licenses and contracting support. I would be even willing to consider an emerg- a fee, an extra licensing fee for an emergency repair permit for it, just to allow the residents to not have their property basically collapse under the inability to be able to do proper repairs. There should be an exception, and by having, assigning a dollar limit on that contract would be a considerable window to go in. As of garbage taxes that we've talked about, originally I did not have any figures on it, because I've never seen a cross balance. In December's, December 1st's documentation, it showed how much was collected and how much was due in taxes for garbage fees. Roughly 6,000, sorry, 6 million in change was... Roughly 6,000, uh, sorry, 6 million in change was, 5 million collected, 1 million 5 between 2017, 2018. At the same period of time, when I looked at the, uh, this year's monthly audit, the trash collection agency used $309,000 for a one-month period. Taking that out for a 12-month period, that puts it roughly at 3.7 million. Which puts it, supposedly it was supposed to balance and be equal. Looking at 2017 and 2018 from those figures, and they're generalized figures. The, uh, the garbage tax is collecting 175, about, and 184% roughly, over, an extra 75 and an extra 80%, 80% over the fees that are being used for that collection. I could be wrong, because there's supposedly an argument of fees not being added in for maintenance equipment and all that. But if so, it should have, that should have been reflective in the budget of the cost for, I think it was line 84, which was the trash collections, the garbage fees. As a benefit to the citizens with the 511, I don't know if anyone has, and I spoke to it after council last week. Northeast Revenue Service was the collection arm of the city, once the fees became delinquent. Is there a possibility, and the fees were based partially upon, as far as I know, I have not looked at the contract, I don't know where it is. The fees were based upon how much was outstanding due to the city that NHS collected. If those fees were charged in excess, and it comes down to that in the courts, is there an ability by the city to direct the Northeast Revenue Service to refund or do a clawback of those fees charged in excess of what was actually physically owed? If there isn't, it should be looked into. And I'm not saying refund it and have the citizens have to go and refund it. I'm asking for the city to go in, if this is possible, and work out an agreement. Because at that point, the city could take it, take all the monies recouped, and put it back into the general tax fund, applying it to the residents next year. It would allow the city to recoup that fund, prepay some of the taxes for the residents, and not have to make them litigate individually to recoup over billing based upon 511, if it comes to that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson.
Good evening.
Resident taxpayer. Interesting article in a paper today, ex-mayor candidate owes $5,000 to city landlord. Why would advise the city landlord that if you're going to, seeing as he was involved in the 511 tax lawsuit, don't lend money to people that plan to do that. That's been a big strike against us. And I spoke about it last week. And it isn't just money coming from inside the city, it's money coming from outside the city. It's a reasonable amount. If you made $100,000 last year, which we all don't, but, uh, that would be about 16.23, 0.1623, 1666% of your salary, like, you know, or 0.1. It's like, really? But the point being that the city does, I spoke on this last week, we have 36% tax-exempt property, and that's just fine. But I feel that anything that exceeds the average of all the communities and all the tax-exempt property in this state should be averaged out, and then the state should, at least with a little plus on their side, start compensating for all of this property. It's their constitution, it's our constitution. But if you really read the First Amendment to the Pennsylvania Constitution, it's a little too strong for the federal cons- national constitution, so. We really need to get on this, and I'll say it right here, Mayor Gibbons, don't ever ask me for a vote, or Mayor Gibbons, Judge Gibbons. Uh, every, every idea that Amoroso came up with, JHA, Henry Amoroso, whatever, solutions, has been ruled out in court, every one, you know? The sewer authority, they, they had that big lawsuit, that, you know, the 511 taxes, the commuter tax, it just goes on and on and on. Now, uh, I read an article in the Tribune last week again about walkability downtown. In order for me to drive a car downtown and park and pay to park, I have to be licensed, I have to be insured, I have to be inspected, and I have to be registered. And there has to be an inspection sticker on the window. Or otherwise, a policeman could just stop by, discover that, you know, I'm not properly covered for all of this, and I get to watch my car get towed away. And, uh, you know, I probably pay some pretty hefty fines. So, you know, I'm really concerned about that. I don't think we have that type, just because Pendot wants to come in and throw some money around for a bicycle lane. It's, it's like, I'm not, I rode bike myself until I developed a disability that, with an ankle, and it greased me, but I used to ride my bike out on old railroad beds and stuff. And out in the woods where I didn't have to worry about cars, because people even swerved at me in a court yet. You know, the guy pushed me into the bushes and took off. I guess he didn't like the length, liked my hair or whatever, but, uh... And then, once again, on this trash deal, I would suggest that we really get an accounting out of, uh, out of DPW. On what the trucks cost, what the crews cost, what everything costs, even if they don't show up at your front, just to show up at your front door, I'm sure the costs are significant. And I want trash taken out. I don't want to have to deal with my neighbors, next-door neighbors' trash, or whatever. And, uh, right up the street and see trash laying all around. And that's what I had seen in other communities that I lived. I lived in 10 different communities, so, I mean, I've seen it all. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, have a nice evening, Mr. Dobson. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to address the council tonight?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
Councilman Rogan, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, just one brief comment on one item. I know for the last couple of weeks, I'm sure we've all been contacted, by a number of people with issues with the recycling, now that the recycling center requires cardboard and paper to be separated. Today I did get a couple of calls from residents, and I did see on social media, and I hope it's not true, but what I was told was, people had done what they were told to do, was separate their paper and their cardboard, and that the paper was picked up, as it should have been, by a recycling crews, but the cardboard was just thrown in the trash. So I would like to inquire with DPW to see if that's in fact happening, or if it was just an isolated incident. Obviously, recycling has been a tough issue lately for the city. And it's no fault of our DPW that the county, that the county recycling center has changed their protocols. But simply throwing away cardboard that people took the time to separate out to recycle certainly isn't acceptable. There's an environmental issue, and more importantly, because the garbage fee comes up every week at these meetings. The city pays for every ton of garbage that goes into that landfill. It costs us money. Every ton of recycling is money that we don't have to spend. So it's keeping your costs down. That's why I've always been such a strong proponent of recycling. So if everyone agrees, I would like to send a correspondence to the DPW just asking if that's in fact happening, as a policy. And also, I know we've inquired already what the plan for the future is. I know there was a talk about, I know one of my colleagues mentioned about maybe doing alternating weeks, paper one week and then cardboard the next, which some people will be upset about, but it certainly beats the alternative of just throwing, throwing the cardboard away. So like I said, I hope that that's not true, but it, I did hear it from multiple people in West Scranton that have, typically they have their garbage picked up on Monday, but because of the holiday, they were picked up today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rogan. Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. As chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I would like to thank Detective Monahan and the Scranton Police Department SWAT team for the active shooter training and simulation yesterday provided to me and my colleagues at the Career Technology Center. I know that we often, we were often criticized for high taxes, but this is a prime example where our tax dollars are at work providing valuable training to keep our kids safe. And secondly, I would also like to thank, I'm sorry, thank and congratulate Lieutenant Marty Crofton, the former commander of the Special Operations Group, which is the city SWAT team, for retiring after 40 years of exemplary service. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Uh, yes, I do have a few comments. First off, as chair of the committee on community development, I do plan on meeting with OECD on Friday to go through the department, meet everyone there, and to discuss what, um, what their plans are and how I can help. I also know that there were some questions regarding my platform while I was campaigning, and a couple of the things that I did talk about as I was campaigning, prior to being here on council, I am already making some movement on. One of those things was to build our relationships with the colleges and universities that are here in Scranton, and to help retain students in Scranton after they are graduating. So I have met with the University of Scranton, and I plan on setting up meetings with all the other local colleges and universities, touring the ones that I have not been to, and discussing how we can have more internships here in the city of Scranton, and also what changes we can help make in order to keep students here. And something else that was also very important to me as a citizen was to have more communication with the city. And I feel like there should be other opportunities for the public to talk to us, city council members, aside from just having our weekly meetings. So I would like to make myself available on a monthly basis, as well as any other council members that would like to join me in more of an informal meeting, just around in the community that is open to the public and anyone who would like to come and discuss whatever topics are on their mind. In addition to that, something that I would also like to propose and discuss with my fellow council members would be to hold quarterly town halls throughout the city in different neighborhoods. And that would be a more formalized event, but to perhaps get some others in the public to, to come and talk about issues with the city who wouldn't normally be able to come here during our weekly meetings. And I believe that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Councilman Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Uh, yes, just briefly. Ms. Reed, uh, I believe after we met with Kohanski in December, we requested a meeting with Rainey and Rayning. Do we ever receive a response? Okay, because I know it went to Dave, so the request went to Dave initially, so probably, okay. So would you be able to schedule that then as soon as possible? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donahue. Uh, thank you for coming tonight, everyone. Just have a few comments. First, I had the opportunity last night to attend a service, as Mrs. Jeffries mentioned, at the Shiloh Baptist Church in North Scranton, to honor and commemorate and remember Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I have to say that, um, you know, I'm so used to going to church at Holy Rosary and at St. Joe's in Manuka when I lived there, that it was really one of the, um, one of the greatest things that I've ever been a part of. It really highlighted for me the diversity and the great culture that we have in the city. So I want to thank everyone who was a part of the Martin Luther King Commission, all the service that they gave to the city and to the community. And I want to thank Charlotte Ledbetter for all of her work on that. I was really pleased and honored to be there on behalf of the city. Secondly, one of the items that council historically had always talked about was working with the University of Scranton and the local colleges and universities. And one of the things that council did last year was, we worked with the University of Scranton to start an internship program. And we did have an intern in, uh, in council's office for a few months, and I thought it worked out very well. The, the student that was here did a great job, and I was talking the other day with Julie Schumacher Cohen from the university, and she is advertising again to their student body to have another intern come in, hopefully within the next few months. So I think, you know, working with our, our local universities, universities and colleges has really been a benefit to the city, and I'm hoping to do more of that, as Dr. Rothschild had mentioned tonight. One of the other issues that I brought up last week was an issue that residents were having in the 600 block of Main Avenue. Behind the homes in the 600 block of Main Avenue is Powderly Court, and apparently there were some issues there with the land actually kind of caving in. I did speak to Director Gallagher from the DPW, and he informed me that, you know, this has been an issue that has occurred before. The land is privately owned, so I did contact Mrs. Reed today and at Mr. Gallagher's suggestion to forward that request over to the Licensing and Inspections Department to see if they can assess the situation, because in speaking to two of the neighbors, it is very dangerous. And the third thing I want to mention tonight, and this is an agenda item where we're ratifying the fee agreement with Stevens and Lee in regards to appealing the Judge Gibbons Act 511 decision. I think it's really important that we don't hand any law firm a blank check. As I sat here on council for the past six years, and has been documented very well in the newspaper and in other sources, you know, we enter into agreements with law firms. Everybody knows the deal that went down with the sewer authority and all the legal fees. And then months and months later, everyone is shocked to learn of the exorbitant, at times, legal fees. So what council discussed in our caucus tonight, and what we will make an amendment on next week, is that we are going to ask Stevens and Lee, or request Stevens and Lee, to live within a litigation budget. So we would like them to anticipate costs as accurately as they can, as the circumstances will allow. And as I said, it is very important to control costs and to have this firm provide a detailed budget based on their expectations concerning the scope of the litigation. So before next week, Solicitor Hayes has been working diligently on this, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. And hopefully we have it before the final vote next week, so we can make an amendment on that. And finally, as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, you know, one of the things that, as far as I'm, I know, has never been done in council chambers or with city council, is we have requested an exit conference to be held with Kohanski and Company, the firm that prepares our audit. So next week at 5:45, Kohanski and Company will provide the council with the exit conference information and the results of the audit. As I mentioned in the caucus tonight, I think this is just best practice, and I'm hoping moving forward that this occurs on a regular basis. In speaking with Mayor Cognetti a week ago, I know that she is eager as well to make sure that the audit is done on time, and that we have that in hand, as it says in the Home Rule Charter. Obviously, you're always going to run into issues and things pop up that you weren't aware of, but when Kohanski and Company were in, they highlighted some serious issues with the 2018 audit and with the preparation. So the purpose of that next week is to communicate the results to this council. And finally, I said finally before, but I do have one more thing. The Kaiser Valley flooding situation is something that in six years on council, we have had people, Mr. Cerebro amongst others, who have communicated to us, obviously, the major issues in the Kaiser Valley area. major issues in the Kaiser Valley area. Also, there are issues across the city. Mr. Young comes to mind on Wyoming Avenue, flooding issues there. One of the things that I actually spoke with Mr. Gallagher today about, and we're going to reach out to our, our grant writer in the police department, Maggie Perry, is a grant opportunity that I think the city is interested in pursuing, which is an overall analysis of the Kaiser Valley area, particularly in the pumping, where the pumping station is, to see if we can address that whole issue, whether it's, do we need a bigger pumping station, does the city need to pursue possibly buying out those properties? Every year, it is an issue. Every year, there are people that come to council, that call us, and that call the administration. So I'm hopeful, we're going to get an update on that. I asked Mrs. Reed to contact Mrs. Perry. We're going to get an update on that, and I will provide that to the public. And that's all I have. Thank you.
5B for introduction of resolution ratifying and approving the fee agreement for legal services from the law firm Stevens and Lee on behalf of the city of Scranton in the matter of St. Flure et al. versus City of Scranton et al., Lackawanna County Court of Common Pleas, Doc, at number 2017 CV 1403.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 1, 2020, and ordinance closing and vacating a portion of Blucher Avenue between Beach Street and Birch Street.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 2, 2020, and ordinance amending file of the council number 43, 2018, and ordinance amending file of the council number 100, 1976, entitled, and ordinance as amended, levying general and special taxes for the fiscal year 1977, by setting the millage for the year 2020, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter, by amending section 1, reverting back to the millage rates from 2016, which are .232521 mills levy on land, and .050564 mills levy on all buildings, and by eliminating the dedicated millage for debt service contained in section 2, and replacing the dedicated millage for debt service with a dedicated debt percentage of 33% of real estate tax revenues collected on a current-year basis.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, resolution number 2, 2020, approving in accordance with section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority, and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton for the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for northeastern childcare services.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chair for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 3, 2020, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit number 5654, Lackawanna Avenue and Franklin Avenue.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 4, 2020, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit number 40110 at Lackawanna Avenue and Mifflin Avenue, entrance to Steamtown Mall.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gunn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. Just one final note before we end tonight's meeting, I just want to clarify that next Tuesday at 5:45, council will be having our quarterly meeting with the nonprofit in charge of the parking meters in DC that will be held at 5:45. The following Tuesday, February 4th, we will have the exit, audit exit conference with Kohanski and Company that will also be held at 5:45. Thank you. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.